Committee meeting Wednesday, December 9th, and it's 5:00 PM. Our agenda is preliminary SBSU budget review. We're going to set subsequent meeting dates and other issues to be brought before this committee. I think we pass this on to Renee.
There's three packets there. So what you have and what we have up on the website or the agenda is the typical way that I've presented the budgets in the past, first by categories. So it's taking the whole SBSU local budget and breaking it out into those nine categories. Salaries, benefits, contracted services, operations, transportation, tuition, supplies, equipment, dues and fees. And then with that is a narrative that goes through each of the categories to kind of give you highlights or what some of the biggest changes or factors are that are driving the changes that you're seeing on those budget lines. Once we get through that, so the first three pages are category. And then you'll get to another budget variation, and that is again total expenditures, as we said, that would be by department or function. And that also has an associated narrative with it as well. So we will start with the category. And before I get too far along, in an effort to try to help with some acronyms on the second page of the budget by category, I tried and then as soon as I hit print, there was a couple I realized I didn't include. Just in case any of us, we try not to use the acronyms, but sometimes we, you know, just being living in it. Doing that, so that is there. So the first category is salaries. So we have. I don't have it all stapled in a nice packet, but. Yeah, so actually, Todd, yours is loose, so you can kind of look at it side by side, the expenditures with the narrative. We've gone through the collective bargaining agreements, so the CBAs have been established for both our unions, the teacher and ESP. So we've factored those in. And then just to kind of refresh everybody, our staff at the SU level is administration. And then we have our support services, pre-K, and all of our paras, with the exception of the Arlington School District quote unquote, "local paras" are all at the SU level. So we have a vast majority of people from the ESP collective bargaining unit are part of this budget. Our secretarial staff, but our custodians would still remain in our local budgets.
Are the people doing the same jobs in Arlington?
They have separate bargaining agreements. So we have two separate sets of contracts, two separate sets of salary grids. Benefits are of course negotiated at the statewide level, or at least health insurances. So for the most part, there's a lot of folks here.
Are there Arlington's teachers, teaching staff, they're on a separate contract?
And then another just thing to note in the salary section of the budget is that there was a proposal for an adjustment to our occupational therapist salary levels. Nick, Nick Bell, our director of HR, is actually working on that right now, working on the analysis to give us recommendations, but I did put a factor in for my best guess, kind of thinking what he may or may not come back with, but I definitely have a factor in there. Another change in the salary line is our transition of our educational technology director, Frank Barnes. His position was replaced by a contracted service. So that is contributing to a reduction that you're seeing in the salary line, but it will be an increase on the contracted service line once we get down there. Over the course of the past couple of months, there have been a couple of proposals that have been brought to the board. And I think I've captured them all here. One was an increase for the Arlington occupational therapist from a .4 FTE to a .6, so that's been factored in here. The physical therapist that was serving early education was increased to a 1.0 FTE that was approved back in August. And .2 of that physical therapist this year is actually serving a neighboring SU, so that is an agreement we have with the supervisory union that they will be paying us for that .2 of that position and benefits. But Dr. Abbott can attest to this, that there's just an increased need, so we've actually pulled that 1.0 fully into the budget without any offsetting revenue. And then I think it was, yeah, in September, there were two additional paraprofessional positions that were brought to the SC board by Bill Basic, and that was approved. We have one in this budget, and then we built the other one into the ARPIVEA grant, so. And on the second page of our narrative, ARP, Students Re-American Rescue Plan, and IDEAB is the Individuals with Disabilities Act. It was just one of the buckets of money that we've gotten from the federal government. So that grant was submitted for, I think it was, I think it made the original deadline of December 1st. Another two new positions that are proposed. One was actually, has been in the budget in the past. Last year, we ended up reducing it based on our student population, but we have been informed that we do have some incoming students that will be English language learners, so that's what ELL stands for. So we're proposing that we reinstitute that position at a full 1.0, so there would be a total of two FTEs in that category. And then another proposal of an associate director for student services, which is partially being funded through a position that we had a retirement this year and has not been filled. So those funds are kind of shifting and help offset that proposed cost. So those are the big changes there. But just to note, we're still reviewing staffing. With COVID, we have had quite a bit of turnover and people are shuffling to try and, you know, cover lead in various buildings, so we're trying to identify and make sure we know who's where. I know we've got everybody captured. So at this point, I mean, I've been born really good standing, but we just, you know, are taking our time to actually go back through and make sure that we've captured everyone.
Same, but those people who tune in and don't have the option to look at the acronyms and stuff, Director of Student Services, could you explain what that position does, I guess?
So we have, it's been a change in terminology. We used to refer to it just solely as special education. But now we refer to it as student services. So the way that the department is structured now, there is the interim director of student services, that's Dr. Abbott, and then there are currently three positions at the SU level for associate directors, so they support and basically work directly in the school buildings, various buildings, depending upon how they've been assigned. This particular one that we've added here and carrying in the on-point on-point fund or on-point budget, but it definitely would be serving multiple buildings, not just that building as well. And then there are additional support staff too, so there are some secretaries that support that department along with all of the special education teachers and occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech and language pathologists, and so on and so forth. So the next category kind of goes hand in hand with the first one. So benefits, that's really the bulk of our budget salaries and benefits for all of our staff. We have been advised by VHI, the Vermont Education Health Initiative, that they proposed the following rate increases for our health insurance plans. The majority of our staff are enrolled in the gold CDHP for those who actually elect the health insurance benefits, and that's forecasted to be a 5.2% increase. We still do have a few folks on the platinum, which is a 4.4% increase. The gold is a 4.5. And then the silver CDHP, 2.8, and CDHP stands for Consumer Directed Health Plan.
So these, based on the final arbitration award?
I'm sorry?
Are these increases based on the arbitration awards?
I think they were, they were independent, so they're based on what VHI finances are, and they have to have so much in reserve. So I know that the arbitration was just.
This is just an insurance calculation.
Yep. So this is just for the premiums. With the statewide negotiations, I think they were just settled this last week, I think it was. So those teachers and licensed professionals that are not, I think pretty much everybody, at least in our SU now, teacher and licensed professionals are contributing 20% towards their premium, or the employer is paying 80%. And the support staff, the negotiations resulted in the support staff that isn't contributing 80% will increase their percentage 1% per year beginning January 1st of 2023. So we have factored that into this budget as well.
So they're contributing less than 20% now, and you're adjusting for.
Right. So January, for the folks that were in the SU before BBSU joined us, they were contributing 14%, so they are actually going to 16% as of January 1 of this year, so they'll go another 1% in January of next year. Arlington, they're just off, I think, by a percentage point, so it'll be a sliding scale until everybody gets to that 80% or 80-20% mark. Along with the that cost sharing proportion, there's the out-of-pocket costs. And the decision that was made actually keeps the support staff the same. So those folks that are on a single plan or an employee-only plan will have out-of-pocket costs contributed at $2,200, and any other tier is $4,400. Teachers and licensed administrators, that actually slides down $200, so it's a savings for the employer, but more money that the employee has to come up with out of pocket. Another thing to note on the HRAs is that we have some pretty good history, although COVID has kind of thrown a wrench into everything. We had previously been budgeting 100%, not knowing when we shifted to these new high deductible health plans, really what the demand was going to be. We've, I'm comfortable in the fact now that we've been on these plans for a few years and we can start sliding that back. Nick could probably attest to the actual numbers, but I think we're in the neighborhood of the upper 70s, upper 70% of what our maximum out-of-pocket could be is what we're actually seeing. So some people use it all, some people use very little, so we average it all together. We're in the, you know, mid to upper 70 range, so.
Talking about deductibles or out-of-pocket?
Out-of-pocket. And we did have, before we went to the statewide negotiations, our local negotiations had employee paying first. Now it's employer pays first. So I have slid back the budget. I've only budgeted 90% because now with employees not having to pay first, we may see an uptick. So we will still be covered. But I will keep an eye on that as time progresses and continue to kind of scale that back as, to kind of see the averages play out. Dental rates are staying flat again for next year, so there's no changes there. Any of the employees that we currently have on staff, and if, you know, we know what plans they have, we've budgeted for those changes. I've also factored in for the proposed positions, budgets that are associated with those. And then one other factor that we're pretty certain of is that there's going to be an uptick to the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System contribution on the employer side of a .5. So right now, we're at .75%. They said it won't be, the treasurer's, state treasurer's office said it won't be any more than .5, which not that I'm a betting person, but I would say it's probably going to be the full .5%. So that has been factored into this budget as well.
Is that supposed to make up for the shortfalls that they see coming? They really think?
They're trying, and I think it's going to be. Based on her letter, they are thinking it's going to be .5% each year for a period of four years. Yeah, so we'll see this over and over again over the next several years. Okay, so those are the biggest factors contributing to that line of the budget there. So the next one is our contracted services line. And this again is currently under review. Again, one of the biggest factors you're seeing is that the shift from our educational technology director, from an actual employee to a contracted service. So that's one of the biggest things you're seeing driving that increase there. And then there is also a proposal to include a new cooperative classroom through the, actually, it's another acronym I missed, I think, NACC, the New England Center for Children. So we currently have three classrooms at the elementary level. That is our staff in cooperation with NECC, the New England Center for Children. They provide us with the, and actually, Kate, feel free to jump in if I'm misstepping here, but I know they provide us with the teacher and BCBA supports, so BCBA is a board-certified behavior analyst. We provide the space, we provide funding for supplies, and we provide the one-on-one para supports. So we have three of those at the elementary level, two currently at the middle school, one at the high school. And based on the numbers of kids that are moving up through the grades, Kate has asked that we include funding for a cooperative classroom at the high school, so that would be one at the high school level. In addition, you know, to just those biggest factors, you know, we do contract for a lot of speech and language pathology. We contract with physical therapists, we are contracting with clinicians, we're contracting with psychologists. And we also have, going back to like benefits, our health equity is our third-party administrator for our health savings accounts and our health reimbursement arrangements. So there's fees associated to each employee that has one of those accounts, so those are factored into this category as well. Operations is the next category, oh, four. And this kind of, if you think about basically what it takes to kind of operate everything, you know, within our system, so it's all of our utilities for the SU-operated buildings. Any repairs and maintenance, whether it be on a building or equipment, our equipment leases, including copiers and computer equipment. Rent, the rent for, so we have rent for a central office, we have a small rent that we pay for the on-point programs, the Mount Anthony Union School District as well. So that's factored in there. Travel reimbursements for our staff, printing, advertising, telephones, internet, that's all kind of captured here in this category. So we have factored in the potential rent increase for moving our central offices to the Brush Building. Nick has asked that I put a couple extra thousand dollars in as he would like to expand where we're actually recruiting. So I added that in. And then our janitorial contract is on an annual renewal right now. So they currently service this building and early education as well, along with the Bennington Elementary Schools, but that's not factored in here. Our transportation, the next category, oh, five, is this solely, actually, for those of you from Arlington, this is just, this category, when you're looking at that, is just with our with due for, because of the busing, that you guys have your own staff, so the staffing costs are included in the salaries and benefits, and then the operations of the buses are included in the previous categories. So we are going out to bid this year, so I have factored in and assuming that we're going to see an increase there. But you'll notice that the overall budget line is decreasing, and that kind of goes hand in hand with the next line down of tuition, and that's because Dr. Abbott has been working to bring a number of our students that are in out-of-district placements back into the SU and serving their needs here within our own programming. So we've been able to slide back what our anticipated tuition costs are to those day placements, and then the associated transportation costs with those as well.
Could I keep you on the Arlington question, I guess? Tom ran into problems with having their own buses. Arlington has their own buses, if I'm not mistaken. How does, how does that, how does that work?
A change in the Secretary of Education is probably the simplest answer. The previous Secretary of Education enforced regulation saying that the transportation had to come under the SU. Current Secretary of Education interprets that statute in a different way and says that it is under the SU. So for now, anyways, Arlington keeps their buses. That's my understanding, so.
Sandy has one too.
Not a problem.
Sandy has one.
We may, as you mentioned, Tom reluctantly gave up their buses, and it's, you know, a tough maybe for them to hear because they would love to have their buses back, but the interpretation I was given. Doesn't mean economy of scale could change, you know, going forward, but for right now, there's no plan to include them in our transportation contract.
Right, yeah, so that is definitely keeping kind of apples to apples what we have now between due for and the services they provide to and from school, and then our special education transportation costs as well.
That's always the annual.
When we go out to bid, we can do a three-year contract with two optional renewals. So we are, I think we may be in our sixth year right now because of COVID. I reviewed statute, and as long as we haven't exceeded 30% of the original contract and we're within the allowable NEEP index, which is information that comes out from one of the finance managers from the agency. We renewed our contract last year at an increase of 2.6%, so we're still within that allowable threshold. But I know that so much has changed that I think we all just kind of need to revisit it and put it back out again, so. So then the next one, tuition, I think I kind of touched upon that. We do have the set fee for pre-K tuition, so that has been factored in at the same number of seats that we carry every year. One thing to note, though, it's my understanding, and I'm going to, I'm meeting with Bill and Dara tomorrow, so I'm going to get a much better education on the Arlington budget. But the pre-K costs for Arlington are actually in the local budget, they're not actually here at the SU level. So I have not made any changes for that as of right now. But we do have some partners that have surfaced wanting to participate with Arlington, so we're actually using our SU agreement but paying them through the Arlington local budget. Next one down, and to take number seven and number eight somewhat hand in hand, because you see there's an offsetting increase and decrease. A few years ago, we revisited our capitalization thresholds and revamped them to kind of increase what we consider equipment. So essentially, right now, the biggest things that, you know, we're purchasing are, you know, computer equipment, our Chromebooks and things of that nature. So in order for something to be considered equipment, it would have to have a single cost of $5,000 and have a useful life of more than one year. So technically, you know, this machine costs a thousand dollars, it's considered a supply. We're not capitalizing this and depreciating it over, you know, its useful life. So we had had a lot of budgets in our equipment line that we've just flipped up to the supply line, because my staff can attest to you that they get inundated with requests for budget transfers day in and day out, because we just didn't have the money in the correct place for them to spend it. So trying to work on that as we're implementing, continuing to implement the new uniform chart of accounts that we implemented when we switched to e-Finance back in July of 2019, I guess it was.
Is this the place where you want to comment on the? Here's a lot of comment and all. Sorry.
About the e-Finance?
Well, the state closed system, I guess I'm wondering.
So that cost, we actually would have carried, believe it or not, in the equipment line. Because so we used to be with Infinite Visions and folks in Arlington, Infinite Visions Power Technologies product. Back when the legislature passed their initiative for the SSDDMS, the statewide school data management system, they had gone through a bid process and ended up selecting a Power School product of e-Finance Plus. We were told that they were going to be implementing that over a series of, I think it was three years. And we had basically a tiered option, that we could join rounds one, two, three, or four. Four was going to be the last round available, where we would have unlimited support for implementation. And that go-live date was July 1 of 2019. So knowing what it's like to implement software, because back when I was in HR, we rolled out the benefits portal, which I had to set up and worked very closely with the software company. It's a big undertaking. So I knew we were going to want the support, so we jumped aboard round four and off we went. It has been a really, really challenging endeavor. And our auditor is willing to come to talk to the board about how they truly wish that this did not happen, and they feel like the product is inferior, and it's causing a significant toll on the staff. So.
You did it all for doing that to other districts all over the place.
But there were, there were other districts that kind of dug their heels in. Once, you know, we had the four folks that went in round one kind of waving the white flag, saying, you know, this isn't working, this isn't working. I think round. I think rounds two and three, I only think three happened. And then a bunch of other SUs, SBS said, we're not doing it until all of this is kind of flushed out. So we were already in it at that point. But I think many of the state organizations, the Superintendent's Association, I don't know if the school School Boards Association, if they've taken a stand on it. But there, there's a lot of, I think, pushback on this. But while in theory, it's great, you know, because the state now can just kind of, they have access to our database so they can pull our, our information at any time. The software is lacking and is causing some, some significant strain on our reporting. Just to be able to pull reliable reports out of the system. And then, of course, you know, staff stress and the amount of time it takes to actually do processes. So I would love it if the state would allow us to kind of go back. But since we're in it, I don't know if that's a possibility. And if we did, there was going to be a cost associated with that. So right now, the state's paying for e-finance plus, so I was able to pull ninety thousand dollars out of our budget back in twenty nineteen. I don't know, you know, a lot remains to be seen, I guess, as to what's going to happen. So I have not factored anything into this budget for us to revert back to a potential Tyler product.
Well, it sounds like there's a cost, you know, associated with it now, based on time and stress. You know, that we don't always factor in, but human, human labor cost is a significant cost.
Yeah, there was a, a survey that the Vermont Association of School Business Officials put out. And I, I shared it with a number of departments here, those of us that are, you know, using it regularly. And a number of the responses were it's, it's taking probably fifty percent longer to do some processes. And that, one of the questions was, if it was possible to switch back to another software, would you? And it was unanimous across the board that, at least for our SU, we would absolutely support that, so.
So basically, the state is forcing us to use this stuff, right? And it doesn't work, so they're going to stay stuck on stupid, we're going to keep using it. I mean, hello.
I, I wish that I had, you know, better foresight in knowing that things weren't going to go as well as they promised and they were. Because, you know, we could have just dug our heels in and stayed where we were, would have been in a much better position, but.
Do we have, we don't still have the Tyler Infinite?
Infinite Visions.
Yeah, on, on our, on our soft, on our computers.
We do, actually, because we have our databases, we're on our server. And when BDSC broke off, they put theirs on their server. We weren't actually posted. We were thinking about posting, going to the clouds, things would have been different, but we have all of our historic data right up through FY nineteen.
But that's not updated from twenty nineteen.
No, because we have to, we have to pay for support. So I mean, it's still there, but we haven't gone through the, you know, updates that are, you know, they happen regularly.
So we, we aren't actually paying for those, what we pay for annually is a set of updates, right?
Updates and support.
And support.
Right.
So we haven't been doing that, but we have what we had. That particular operating system, that interface, user interface is still there. It's just not up to date and not maintained with the current date.
So that's my two cents on e-finance. And then the, the last category there is the dues and fees, and I'm just projecting an increase to the Vermont School Board Association dues that they charge us annually. So that's part of that, or that's actually the only increase that I factored in there.
How much are those?
This year, they were just over twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So any questions on any of that? I'm happy to, you know, jump through the other version, because there are a couple of things I do want to point out. The function or department breakdown. Kate, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add at this point or as I start going through the other way when we, we start talking about the PT and OT, physical therapy and occupational therapy. Feel free to chime in.
Thank you.
I didn't know, I can't see anybody on my screen, so I don't know if anybody like has raised hands or if there's questions or anything.
Sounds like Kate's willing to chime in, if that's Kate.
All right.
That's Kate.
Yeah, would you like to, would you like to hear a little bit about the OT and PT needs and then the, or now or later?
Well, let me run you down through this and then as we kind of get there, you can probably jump in with, with some of the things that you're seeing from your perspective. So the, the category budget, if you think about this, what I've done is essentially collapsed all of these categories into individual departments and or functions. So when you look at the, the other variation, so at the top, it's the SBSU total expenditures by department or specialty. For each one of these four-digit codes, you are seeing the total budget that includes salaries, benefits, contracted services, so on and so forth. So our direct instruction and, and there's some, an associated narrative that goes along with it as well. So the eleven oh one direct instruction, that includes all of our local paras as well as our pre-K instruction and English language learners. I didn't actually break that out into, onto the spreadsheet here, but I did break it out in terms of what you have on your narrative. So the biggest factor that you're seeing to the increase there would be the, the addition of that second English language learning teacher, a one point oh FTE ad for that one. The twelve oh one special education, that includes all of our special education support personnel. So that would be paraprofessionals and intensive special needs specialists, along with our teaching special education staff, our SLPs, the speech and language with all the pathologists, occupational therapists, psychologists, clinicians, those all fall into other categories. So really what you're seeing right there on that twelve oh one is special education instructional staff and associated costs. The twenty one oh one is attendance and social work services. We had a retirement of a school outreach worker in the on-point program, which has not been filled. So that reduction is helping to offset the requested add of an associate director for student services. Health Services twenty one thirty one, that's our nursing staff that's allocated specifically for special education students. Mental Health Services twenty one thirty five, these are our clinicians. Some of our behaviorists are, twenty one thirty five, some of them are in twenty one ninety, other support services. Psychology, we're seeing a decrease there too, so we had some new staff come in. Different salaries, different benefits, so those are contributing to the changes you're seeing there.
Have you, do you have adequate staffing in that category?
In, I'm sorry, in which?
In psychology and mental health services, I guess.
We have, we have a lot of contracted services that we're using to fill vacancies that we haven't been able to fill. And then thankfully, we actually, a lot of our, the funding that we have through ESR, the elementary and secondary school emergency. Emergency relief fund is going to actually support our social, emotional and mental health of our students. So it's a, a big chunk of where that money's actually going now. But it's a good point you bring up though, because eventually that money's going to run out. So we may have to start pulling some of those folks into the local budgets, you know, as, as that money expires. Kate, anything you want to add there?
Yeah, really, I mean, we're in kind of uncharted waters right here because we're building a budget at the tail end of a pandemic. So there's the, the ESR funds that are trying to address the immediate needs. And then while we take a longer term assessment of what the longer term impact will be. But we're really using the ESR funds as, in that, in that manner to make sure that we're addressing the immediate needs related to that pandemic while we take the longer term assessment, so we're not building in potential long-term costs right now while we use the, the ESR as it's intended. But in terms of the mental health needs, you know, we partner with UCS, our local designated agency. We have school counselors and then we have contracted and hired counselors and clinicians in our schools. The general consensus of our community is that it's, it's really hard to find enough really good people for the need in our community at this moment.
Kate's been very successful in building relationships with new contracted service providers. So we've been able to actually fill some of the vacancies that we have for actual employees with those contracted services. So the money that we have budgeted in the salary and benefits lines, we'd end up shifting down to the contracted service to cover those. I'm into paying a premium for that, but the need is definitely there, so.
Is Kate doing or attempting to do some long-range thinking about what, how much growth there's going to be in these mental health services and pathology for post-COVID? Since it's clearly doing some damage to children, families, certainly adding trauma to children and families.
So I think we're doing ongoing, some ongoing assessments, but some of the, the built-in services that we've had this year have included additional mental health and behavioral supports, social emotional supports and BCBA supports. BCBA's are board certified behavior analysts. And literally last year, we had, a, a part of the year, we had one board certified behavioral analyst. And this year, we have four and they're all absolutely flat out busy. So, but that's, you know, that's the nature of starting up school after you've had a closure, a partial closure. And I think as we're, we are seeing students start to regulate and we are seeing some successes. So I think we need to take a long-range view, but slowly not throw everything into this year's budget potentially. And, you know, assess the needs as we go forward, because we are starting to see children being resilient and families starting to recover.
I guess I'm just asking, I, I understand you, you have limitations about how effective it can be thrown in now. But you, it does sound like you are going to have to plan for ramping up capacity.
So we did build one BCB, yeah, we did build one BCBA into this particular budget that is currently an IDEA, IDEA grant, so that we are shifting, you know, to think about long-range planning. To your point, Ray, is a good point.
So the funding that Kate's referring to, the AR, the American Recovery Plan IDEA B grant actually carries us through twenty twenty four. So we, we've got that budget in there. And then along with our, our ESR two funds, that carries us through September of twenty three. So we're really working into FY twenty four with the grant funds that we have available. And then the, the third round of ESR money carries us through September of twenty twenty four.
So just for curiosity, because I've never quite understood. You know, we have this pot of sort of dark money out there, I'll call it that, just for identification. And we don't see it in the budget, but are the personnel in this budget.
And the people that are being paid out of those federal grants, I have not included here because we wouldn't be factoring those costs into any of our local districts either. So what, what you have before you, what you'll be voting on, is what's going to be your local impact for your local taxes.
It, it occurs to me that we have to see that as a structure, just for transparency.
Which I normally do try to.
Money coming from this community or from the state, it's from beyond that. It's significant portion of overall effort.
So I do, at least the last two years, I think I have kind of given you a snapshot of where we are with our consolidated, consolidated federal program money, also known as title funding, as well as the IDEA grant. Those are all in a fiscal year. So as of, like, right now, we wouldn't, we, I mean, we have an idea, a rough idea of what we might be getting next year, but we really won't know until the spring. So I can definitely, for our next meeting, I can run the, the reports that I've done in the past and let you know where we're spending those funds now and the likelihood that we'll be spending them in the same manner going forward as well. And then, of course, incorporating the, the ESR funds into that as well. It's a new, it's new because we're so used to running on a fiscal year that of having this money branch over several fiscal years, it's kind of creating a little bit of a nightmare for us to keep track of because the auditors want to see things on clean fiscal years too, and that's not the way this funding is working, so. Just another.
They won't see it on our fiscal year. The fiscal year is this, this is on.
Right, and because they're, I mean, they're going to be auditing us, so that's one of the things I think I have noted in here, that there's a small increase.
They don't have audits for those funds.
Well, they're considered federal, so anything that we get over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars generates the need for a single audit. So we had three for FY twenty one, we have even more money now. So we'll probably have more, so there's a small, a small increase to our, our audit sheet in here.
It's like the high school. We have a certain substantial portion below the level of our site and oversight.
The audiology line is just in there because we do occasionally have some costs that we didn't actually carry in Medicaid or one of the grant funds, they just kept local. We don't typically carry anything budget, as you can see, the budget for audiology is zero for this year and next because we do fund it through Medicaid and IDEA. So twenty one sixty and twenty one seventy are our occupational and physical therapy budgets. And we did have, way back when we started talking about this from the category side, some changes that we brought to the board over the past couple months to increase FTEs. But Kate, I know that with the adjustment of wages, that, you know, there's been a factor in here. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, but then also the need that you're seeing in the realm of OT and PT.
Yeah, so the OT and PT needs, physical therapy is provided in schools when there's children that are unable to physically access some of the activities and be, be able to learn safely on campus. And some of the things that we noticed is when they were, when we had the closure, not just were schools closed, we had playgrounds were closed and all the sports activities were closed. And so we had children that really physically had a setback in terms of their, their health and exposure to regular activities of some daily living to stay healthy. So we had kindergartners coming in that couldn't even climb stairs this year if they weren't exposed to that. So our PT needs had been increasing and we literally had two physical therapists for a hundred and twenty-two students on the caseload and really needed to evaluate that. And then in that same process, we needed to support some Arlington learners that also needed physical therapy as well. And then with occupational therapy, I think unfortunately, the pandemic has also taken a toll here because students have been on screens far more than they've been doing pencil. far more than they've been doing pencil paper and fine motor kind of work. And so mostly the occupational therapists work in two domains. Well, in two major domains. One is fine, fine motor coordination, hand eye coordination to use like pencils and scissors and things like that, as well as sensory regulation and self-regulation. And we definitely need children that need both sets of skills in, in greater numbers this year than we've had in the past. So both the motor, physical therapy and occupational therapy is a great need. Both for preventative service in terms of helping kids access school and build skills so that they can avoid having a disability as well as kids that need the medical IEP based services.
So there's staff and then there's contracted services.
Correct. Visually impaired services, we, I don't think we've identified any need to increase that with the student population that we currently have. The next line down, 2190. And one of these is one of the things I'm going to actually compare notes tomorrow with Dylan Dare, just to make sure that I have staffing in the current place. I think I may have pulled a behavior interventionist out of one place and put them in here, not knowing exactly what role they're serving. So that could be a, an adjustment on draft two, but that is where I have a behavior person right now. So that's kind of driving that increase that you're seeing there. The next category curriculum 2212, the increase that you're seeing there is mainly driven by the recategorization of two of our existing staff. So right now we have two people that are actually on the teacher collective bargaining. You know, part of the, the collective bargaining unit that were budgeted in tech services. We're actually moving those out of tech services and into curriculum as our director of curriculum instruction and assessment is definitely more involved in that tech setting. So it just seemed like a logical place for those folks to to be budgeted and, and be reporting to her. So it is an increase to that, but that those same folks' salaries and benefits came out of the 2230 that we'll see a little bit further down. Staff training 2213, again, just some existing costs that we've had over the past couple of years into a new function code that we hadn't had previously. The mentor teaching, 2219, that is pre-K cost. So those are partner programs that don't actually have licensed teaching staff. We send our staff to work with them. And I think we had a change in staff. So that's contributing to the change that you're seeing there or change in the FTEs of who was actually doing mentoring versus pre-K services versus special education for our early, early childhood learners. So 2230, reduction that you're seeing partially there is for those two staff that we reallocated. And we have to kind of take 2230 and 2580 together, tech services and tech admin. Because a lot of our costs are kind of shared between those two. The, the tech services are really kind of the boots on the ground technicians and costs that we have in the individual school buildings. Whereas tech admin offers a lot of our supports here at, at this level, but then also like our information systems. So those costs are carried from there. The Board of Ed is just the increase to the VSB dues. Treasure standard increases there. Audit, just a minor increase again because of the increase in federal funding that we have now. They will have to do more work subsequent annual audits. We've increased that and actually got an email right before the meeting and I think I'm going to be able to sneak a little bit of money out of there. Not that it's going to move the the gauge a whole lot on a $39 million budget, but I mean, it's $2,000 that I don't need. So I think I can pull that out for draft two.
So every time you get more ESER funds, that triggers another audit.
Same words. Yeah. So I mean, they're, they're auditing the books of all of the individual districts. They audit the supervisory union as well, but then the federal funding, any federal funding, usually they just pick one. I know whether it's Title I, whether it's food service. So usually it's just one per year. This year they ended up doing three tests because there's so much federal money coming in. Don't anticipate that it'll be more than three, but it was, it was news to me and it's been a lot of work. I think they finally just wrapped that up, but they're still working on, on the audits for all of the other entities now. Okay. So we are. Admin. Biggest increases there are the, the rent, you know, for, for relocating essential offices potentially down to the brush building along with salaries and benefit adjustments across the board. The 2490, special education, early education administration. Again, this is for our existing staff salary and benefit changes, but then also adding a new associate director. Finance, that's our department here, salaries and benefits, human resources line. I should probably slide that down. The human resources budget includes additional recruiting efforts, like trying to expand where we're recruiting our, our teachers and staff from. And then also taking into account the Arlington and former BDSMU staffing and the costs associated with their HRAs and HSAs. It's just easier from a management standpoint to have that all centralized. So we have increased that budget there and we'll be able to pull that out of the local ASD budget. But it's only $3.45 a person. So it's not a lot of money, but it's there. Tech admin, again, just some, the shift there from salary and benefits to the contracted service. Building operations. This is really just a minor increase accounting for what I'm thinking we might see for our janitorial services. Rounds and maintenance, that would be our plowing services for early education. Safety and security, that's a stipend and associated benefit costs, travel and supplies for our SU security coordinator, safety and security coordinator, Vic Maloney. And then this is, so transportation that you see here encompassed together in the 2711. That is where that's going to be our contracted service along with the staff from serving Arlington and eight school districts and the cost. So that's everything together in that category. So same numbers, just kind of spliced and diced a different way.
How does that go down?
Mainly because of the reduction in our out of district placements for our special education students. So there definitely are increases, you know, for salaries and benefits for the staff. An increase for just our general contract for to and from school. But because we did have quite a few placements that have come back into the local district, it's significant amount of money. And Kate and I are still kind of working through making sure that we've got all the students identified. And we're making sure we're accounting for their tuition and their transportation costs as well.
And it's, it's kind of twofold. I mean, one piece is that, you know, we try to bring children back whenever we can serve them locally. And the second piece is that there's no seats in our private schools in our communities. So children that do need that level of care are waiting to get in. So it's not, it's not completely that we've been 100% able to just bring children back. We also have some children that need more intensive care, but there's no, there's no statewide seats available. So we're waiting. But it does result in fewer children being transported.
Renee, I have a question on 2320. The rent for the potential central office. Now I think I seen something today where they're going to put in a 60 unit affordable housing there. So I don't know.
It's on the vacant, vacant lot.
On the vacant lot. Okay. I was going to say, I, how the hell are you going to put a
Where the tunnel building.
Right. Yeah. Okay. I know. Thanks.
So what the increase there is to, is what's the increase exactly?
$68,000 is the increase for the rent, just to get us into, in the door for the first year for FY23.
We're paying what 25 now?
I've been, I've been working towards getting us into 210 South Street. So it was 60.
This is happening in FY23.
There's no signed contract.
I was saying, we have a signed contract.
Just got a copy of the lease the other day. So that's what the attorney's right now.
And that, that goes, that 68,000 is that, that includes the rental for whatever time you putting in there. But, and that's just transfer over costs or starting to operate in the building.
Yeah. So with the, the letter of intent, and I don't need to jump into things that you're going to. We first go to a regular board meeting. But legal has advised that they, they won't allow us to enter into a contract by because of statute for more than three years with one three-year renewal. The owner and managers of the property are really looking for a longer term commitment, which we're definitely willing to do, but we can't just put it, we can't put it on paper because it just doesn't align with statute. So. To reduce their costs.
Options of.
They have kind of bumped up that, you know, where I think we're starting at $16 a square foot.
Where we thought originally it was going to be lower at the start.
Yeah. That was my impression. I looked into the minutes.
Yeah, there was a, that was given as the maximum number.
Right. As, as something we go to over time.
Yeah, that we could get to over 10 years. I can only commit to three out of the gates. It's like, I, I, you know, I've got to make sure that I'm covering my costs. So.
Cause they're covering the buildup costs.
We covered agenda item five in the next meeting.
Renee, does the cost go down after the initial term if, if they've covered their costs earlier?
Nope.
No, but I think, I think we'll be able to negotiate a, a much lower escalation factor. I think we were probably going to be looking at a 2% increase per year. So if paying more upfront, it'll probably closer to hopefully like a, a 1% or even smaller than a 1% increase annually. Again, that, that still remains to be negotiated.
16% was the maximum for the first lease term.
He threw up numbers of like starting at, you know, between the 12 and $16 a square foot range. So I was hoping we were going to be.
But that was if we signed a 10 year.
With a 10 year lease.
A 10 year lease, which we can't sign.
I would press, I, I'm sure you're already doing this, but I, I'd like to see us press him on, on, you know, the, the second three years, the third three years, having that. If, if he's going to cover his expense and that's his reasoning for raising it, then that can be a reason for for lowering it if we are in there long term.
On our budget proposal.
So that's all I have for you tonight. I guess I would just need to know if, I mean, we'll, I'll continue to work with administration on refining these numbers, but we will have to set another meeting date. And then of course, if any of you have any initial reactions as to things that you want to see.
This budget drives all the individual board budgets. So we, we need to settle this one first so we can do the assessments.
And of course, whatever the, the structure of the assessments are going to be going forward, I'll need to know that as well if I'm going to have a shift in them.
Well, seen these increases before and Renee seems to usually find ways to make them melt away. I'm hoping that happens. I know there are a lot of, heck, a lot of moving parts. And my hat's off, well, it is off actually. To you for the, the way you and your staff and the superintendent and all the other directors could work together to get things down to something that's not too horrific staring us in the face. Of course, we're going to have a lot of federal money here. Oh, wow. So we deal with assessments and other stuff going down the line farther.
Yeah. So hopefully I will have, I've asked the auditors to do what they can to work their magic to confirm what our fund balances are. So we can work those in. So I have an idea as to what our actual costs will be that we have to assess out to to the member districts. And then it's just going to be a matter of, you know, the board agreeing as to how they want those assessments to be done. Right now it has just been like our special education costs have been on, you know, actual costs by the district. And everything else has been on equalized peoples and factors.
Or, or actually statute calls for enrolled pupils and sometimes that's the case. It depends on what board size.
Right. And I can do it either way. I just need to know which way to do it.
So we need to schedule another meeting?
Yes, please.
Christmas is off.
For time.
Within December.
It's always be preferable if we can make it happen.
Weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight. 21st.
We can count that as your December meeting because I don't think we'll probably meet on December 29th. Or December 22nd rather. I mean, if, if we're going to meet the 21st.
Nope.
So we'll do the same setup. We'll do a five o'clock budget meeting. And then have the regular meeting follow right after that.
That worked with everybody?
Any of our board members joining us electronically? Will that work for you? Or, or rather, does it not work for you? The 21st? We'll just assume if we don't hear from you, we'll go ahead and schedule.
I think that date works. The 21st, right?
Yep. Rather than the 22nd, get at least one day further away from the holiday.
Yeah, no, that works. The 22nd would not work. So the 21st does, it works back.
And Scott's giving us a thumbs up. And Matthew's got a thumbs up.
Sorry.
We started. Thank you, Renee. It's a lot of work, as you know, for Renee and her staff to get here and our directors and principals. We'll put in a lot of meeting times to get to this point. So, but, and as Renee has reminded us, this is probably, this is the earliest that we will have to have a budget ready for. Five days is somewhere around the 23rd of January.
We have all of our budgets warned between for the annual meetings. It's the first of March. So warnings have to be approved and posted between the 20th and 30th of January.
That's early. Which means our four meetings will be what the, the Monday, 28th of February. That's that Monday night. And the latest we've heard of those.
And the latest we heard of those, there was go back to pre-pandemic meetings is what my understanding is, which means that when we, last year, we had the, we, we were told, superintendent's were told today that that may be changing, but as of right now, those floor meetings will be physical meetings. Unless they change their mind, but the university rules aren't there, so it'll be, it'll be back at.
Where does Alan sit here?
For me.
We use our, we're from outside. We may use our gym this year, just to spread out a little bit more.
Is that the little building behind the main building?
Yeah, it's, it's attached to our gym.
There were some hints that they may, they may change that, but then there's also some strong belief that they won't. We'll see. So, plan for it.
Is that all I, I, we have other on the agenda, but I don't know if there's any others, so.
No, we just got there.
I'm off the hook for now.
Nothing else we need to consider in the finance?
I don't think we can at the moment.
Well, we need to move to adjourn. The move.
Yeah.
Second from Ray. Favor. No abstentions, right? Does it, does anyone want a break, a quick break, bathroom break before we go to the next meeting, or are we good to go?
Oh, it's right there. It's internet. I'll lower these. Top secret.
All gonna be on board anyway. Are we taking a break or we wanna move ahead?
I'm fine with doing it, just.
All right. Well, it's Tuesday, December 7th, about 6:13. Welcome to the SVSU Board of Directors meeting. The agenda reads as follows. Public comments is item one. Finance and operations related is two. The consent agenda includes minutes, warrants, and resignations. I saw no leave, retirements, or nominations. There are two policies we're asked to warn tonight. Central office lease update is item five. Superintendent will enlighten us on item six. The chair's report is seven. Eight is any other issues to be brought before the board without a binding vote, but for consideration. And there's FYI, which includes the budget status report, the student enrollment for November, and the updated 5030 attendance policy. Board is okay with that agenda and that order? If not, please raise your hand and say something about it. I don't see anything, an objection, so public comments. Do we have a member that wants to make public comments? Hearing none. Move on to finance and operations. Didn't see any hands or anything in reaction, so. We have a treasurer's report for October, ending October 31, 2021. Now move it. Motion from Fran to approve.
Second.
Second from Chayla. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the cash balance report for October 31, signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? No abstentions. Motion carries, and the report is approved. Financial, sorry, right?
Oh, there it is. I, I was looking for it.
All set?
Yeah.
Financial management questionnaire. This is an annual event and gives us information about how things are approved and when and what categories. So, we need approval for this questionnaire?
You may sign it.
This, this is basically your checks and balances.
Thank you, Ray.
Control, a description of, you know, a chart-like description of the control system.
So, we, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Fran.
I'll second that.
Second from Ray to approve. Is there discussion? Set your hand up to go? No, okay. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And no abstentions. Motion carries. Financial control checklist is approved for signature.
Thank you, and we'll just, we'll circulate that to the member district boards just as an FYI.
Okay, then you'll need signature on that.
You have the original?
That's okay. Look like your copy.
Okay, no, I'll get it.
Item 3 is the consent agenda, which includes minutes from, actually, I think October 27th.
Yes.
Which is our most recent SVSU meeting. It includes warrants and resignations. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. You don't have nomination on there.
I am sorry.
I'll second that with the nomination included.
Okay, we have motion from Fran, second from Ray. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? And the motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We have two policies this evening. 6050, special education policy. We're asked to warn that.
I'll move it.
We have a motion from Fran.
I had, I'll second it, but.
Second from Ray, and discussion, go ahead.
Why did we remove the students in the least, this, the clause about students in least restrictive environment? Felt it was redundant, or what? You're on the same or not?
I'm on, I'm on the policy committee, yes. And I think a lot of the changes in these policies have to do with legal review, which says we are going to do this. We're not going to do it in the least restrictive environment. And that's the difference.
We're going to do what?
We're going to provide the services according to the regulations that we need to provide.
But the regulations include that least restrictive clause, so that's, would make it redundant to put it into this policy?
I don't know about the redundancy. I don't think we are allowed to make exceptions in an environment that we might be able to survive. What address?
I'd be interested in hearing what that, what the actual legal.
Which, which line are you talking about?
The last sentence in the first paragraph. Line nine, check it. It's that check.
Statement of purpose, yeah.
It's the first paragraph.
Yeah, first paragraph, which is usually a kind of a statement of purpose.
I think I have my pages all mixed up. So, line nine of.
I was done with, with Dina Atwood, our school attorney.
Does, is there a bit missing? I, I don't wanna hold this up.
I couldn't have it said for it. I just wanna know. I'd just like to see what you have to say.
I, I'm pretty sure it was because of redundancy.
That, that's what I was thinking, but.
Yes.
Because that, that call, that particular requirement is included in the, in the legislation as well.
Right. And, and exactly why we, they scratched out the manual, because the manual is no longer there.
Yeah. Yep. We do have Dina review all these policies as they come up to the board for final.
So, that's the others, scratch out the manual design, yeah.
The, the biggest, the biggest part of this change was in, in item 12. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the biggest change, because sometimes kids weren't included in the field trips because they had a wheelchair, they couldn't make it, you know. They had, and so, we wanted to make sure that was highlighted, but it is.
Jackie, you're on a different policy.
Oh.
You're on the next one.
On the tennis? Oh, field trips.
So, you, you see that FAPE, FAPE is already highlighted in there, so that's where the redundancy. FAPE is the acronym for free and appropriate public education, so. And it's Kate Abbott, Kate, right? This was drafted by Dina, who is also, what are you telling me, doing it for the state?
So, the state has just done a cyclic monitoring of all the different districts, and what they found was they needed to update some boilerplate special education policies. And so, Dina has been leading some of that work with some of the districts around the state, including, and we're still lucky to have her.
Thanks, Kate. Thank you, Kate.
Sorry, it's dinner at my house, as you can tell.
Further discussion on 6050? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any, any in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries in 6050, special education is warned. The next policy, which Jackie's already on, is 6230, 6230 curriculum-based field trip. I'll move it. From Fran.
I'll second it.
We're asked to warn this policy. Discussion. Go ahead, Jackie.
Well, it's just that, in retrospect, we wrote this initially, and we didn't understand or provide for children with disabilities. And so, this is why we added that big chunk of information here, because we need to have, when we have field trips, everybody is included.
And there's some strikeouts, just to clean up the policy, where
Right.
individual school districts are now. Thank you, Jackie. Other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of warning 6230 curriculum-based field trips, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. 6230 is warned. Not sure what that was, but.
It was a vote.
And we move on to item five, central office lease update. Well, we kinda heard Renee's presentation on that. The lease is, there's nothing to vote on tonight. The update is to let you know that it is gonna be at that $16 rate. It will be on an agenda item at a board meeting for the board vote on once we have contract back from the attorney who is reviewing it right now, so. Well, playing opportunity to discuss it, but as I have, you know, it's worth repeating. We're in a building that is really substandard for our needs, is not ADA compliant. And that's really what's, that's what's dragging this. Not that, you know, we wanna just be in nicer digs. It's particularly the lower level of this building. It's, is out of compliance. And the estimate that we had, we had an engineering review of this building. It was $3.5 million to bring this building up to be fully usable on both floors. So, as we hear this increase in rent, let's keep that in mind, what it would be to, to, to stay here long-term, so. And I don't think anybody wants to put $3.5 million into this building right now. Unless you wanna make that a motion, Fran?
Absolutely not.
So, I don't know if we'll have it for our meeting in two weeks.
They would definitely like that if we could.
I know, I know the, our potential landlord would, so we'll, but I also know that Dina is on vacation.
Yeah, David Russ is reviewing.
Russ is doing it, right? I can see that, you know. So, someone else from special pages and pleasure is reviewing the lease for us, so maybe that might be played. All right, well, now that we have a meeting date, we will reach out to the attorney and give them that, that we need that target.
Oh, that's an interesting question. Is there going, what sort of conference space will it be in this?
Hopefully bigger than this. We've, we've met, we have met with the architects, so there's, there's multiple people involved here. There's the landlord, who then, their architectural firm, we have met with, gone over our, provided list of our space needs and a room larger than this, so that we can have meetings, and that, that will be incorporated into this entire.
Strikes me, we have a lot of meetings here now through the last two years. And if we're downtown, then we're likely to have more citizens belonging.
Absolutely, good point.
Yep. So, that should be accommodating.
I mean, you know how construction goes. Right now, when the plans are to be drawn, it's a bigger conference space is. And that is a priority with, and we've made that clear to the developer that we need, we need these spaces. This is used to the day for a, for a lot of curriculum training and professional learning for our staff takes place in here. And it's, it can get tight, so for a lot of reasons, we need a bigger conference room and a second conference room. Because remember, we do have a smaller conference room down in the basement here. So, because this is often booked during the day and not available. The technology that we put into this room, we'd wanna put into that room too, so that we can continue to do hybrid meetings, because it's, it's working well, so.
Is this, you know, we initially talked about this as 8,000 square feet with an option for 10. We still on that proposal, or are we actually going to just take the 10? Given the context of the owner of the building?
Wait, it's, it's gonna stay at the 8 and 10, because it's not all available, all 10 isn't available at this time.
Okay.
But the, our intent is that we would like additional space at some point.
So, that'll be worked into the lease prospect.
Probably not until one of the renewals, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Hope we didn't shock a tenant right now.
Yeah, look, so that means that 2,000 square feet end up being renovated appropriately at that point in time.
Yes.
Based, and a new. But.
And we may find when we're in this space cost, because it's more efficient space, we may determine we don't need the additional 2,000. The, this is so chopped up and isolated in a bigger space, we may find that we're, we're utilizing 8,000 square feet better than we thought we would.
Yep.
Okay, superintendent's report, Kim.
Good evening. Couple of things. You got an email this afternoon from Amy, and I hope that you can all attend. We're going to meet with our, our legislators on, by Zoom. We'll also be physically here, but we just had a discussion about how small it is, so. All board members came, all legislators and administrators, we would use the space up. So, that is Tuesday, December 14th at 8:00 a.m., and you have received that email. This is an opportunity to have a discussion with our legislators on education-related issues before their session begins. So, I encourage you to attend if you may. And like I said, there will be a Zoom link. It was already created by me, and it's in the invitation. So, if that's a more convenient way to attend.
Is this still styled as a legislative breakfast?
It is, but, you know, bring your own. If you're on Zoom, you know, eat, eat your own oatmeal at home. But we, if you come here, we will have coffee and some snacks.
We're showing up on screen with their breakfast.
Right.
Can you ask Amy to re-send it? I did not receive it.
Okay. I did not receive it as well. I, I, I see a pat in here.
I, I, I see a pat in here, so, okay.
Yeah, add me to that list.
All right, we'll, we'll make sure that is resent.
Jim, you're probably asking, I did get it.
That is very good news, Scott, thank you.
It seems the Arlington gets left off quite a bit.
Well, it happens to more than just Arlington.
Scott has been struggling with emails from the SU, but I think we might have worked it out, so. Nick Galt is here, I'm going to ask him to unmute his microphone. We talked last month about our struggles with substitute teachers. And Nick has an update for you on some progress we have made in the past month. Good evening, Nick.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So as you all remember, we, we did increase sub rates. All boards approved those increased rates, which we have found to be very competitive with neighboring districts, both in Vermont, Massachusetts and New York. In addition, I have to credit Gloria Cahill, who came up with a wonderful idea after seeing this in a school district across the border. You may have received letters that were sent to all households in the SU, essentially soliciting interested adults who, who may want to substitute in the building. We did get some responses from that, and in recent weeks, we've had a number of sub trainings that have had quite a few attendees. I don't have exact numbers, and there is, you know, quite a bit of additional work that those substitutes have to do on their own before they're actually ready to sub. But we have had quite a good turnout in our recent sub trainings, including one that we had last week. We have another one coming up tomorrow. So we're getting some new people ready and into the building. And I think, you know, more pointedly for some specific positions, we've even, we've even engaged some contracted services for things like nursing vacancies and other items, other positions like that, where we can use contracted services to find substitutes for long term positions, something that we haven't traditionally done outside of special education in the past. So we're making really good progress. Melissa Senical, Gloria Cahill, they've been holding these trainings. We're trying to pound the pavement and get anybody who's interested out and ready and into the building. So if you know of anyone, pass this message along. They probably received a letter from us in recent weeks, but by any means, we're trying to get the word out that we do need additional subs and to support our staff members when they need to be out.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you to your department for the work, literally knocking on any door you can find to help our schools that are struggling with substitutes. On Sunday, we made an announcement that a call, all call K-12 alert went out to families, that we're no longer going to follow the practice that we have been doing through COVID, that every time that we have a positive case in a school, the whole school community gets the announcement. And then the announcement also says that anyone who had had a positive contact, you know, has been contacted directly. We need to be more strategic on using our resources as this continues to escalate. So the all call part of it is going away and it, but the direct contact to who needs to quarantine will continue. It really is the best use of our nurses and our resources, who are pretty, they're stretched pretty thin at this time, doing a tremendous job for us. But so direct contacts who are required to quarantine, who have been, those will, those calls will still go and will make it sometimes. We also have to go knock on doors because we don't have current contact information. So we, we make sure that happens at a last resort. We have to greet some families at the door in the morning and say, we weren't able to reach you, but your child needs to quarantine. So that part will continue. But we also had heard some complaints from families saying, I'm getting a call from my school every day, you know, and I'll call every school because there's another positive case. And it's often just a small group, but so we're, we're shifting how we do that, so just wanted everybody to understand that. I also have, that's one way to try and cut back on the stress that everybody is feeling, but I am concerned about our staff. So we're going into, we're going to shut down operations on the 22nd of September, September, where, September of December. It's the last day of school, our teachers will go home, but my fellow administrators, office staff, custodian, maintenance workers, we're going to suspend operations until January 3rd. I think it's, it is vital, as we continue to deal with this virus, that I have people rested and ready for what comes again in January. I have personally witnessed some real emotional trauma from our employees, and I'm concerned about their well being. And I think this is, this is going to give everyone a welcome break. Particularly, you know, our office staff, our custodial maintenance workers, they have been here all along. They, you know, when everyone else was remote, they were still in the building. So there are some emergency crews that need to be available. I'm trying to encourage people to stay off their email. Nick Galt was part of this suggestion from HR, Assistant Superintendent Laura Boudreaux, who works very closely with Dave Melnick, who is a a trauma consultant in our district, and talks about how important it is to give people a brain break. And that's, that's what I'm going to attempt to do here and encourage them to stay off emails. I told my administrators, we all have each other's cell phones, for a true emergency, we can get ahold of each other. But try to give yourself the rest that you need. You know, in some ways, I, I think the impact has been worse this year than in the first two school years that we had this impacted, when it first went out in in March of 2020. No one really knew how long we were going to be out, so, you know, it was kind of a newness, so we could deal with it. We're all rallying together, which is still happening, but I'm just seeing a weariness that I think this is important. This year, because when we left in June of, of 21, everything seemed so positive, not seeing that these other variants were going to come and impact. And there is, I, I want to say this, there is no option to go remote in the state of Vermont, right? So that, that's clear, because I've got a lot of emails to people saying like, well, why don't we just go remote? It will not count for education. I can allow some remote learning, as long as 50% of the students are in the building. But our teachers really can't do remote learning and be in the classroom at the same time. It's, it's, the impact on them is just, it's, I can't thank all the staff and I can't thank our teachers, our professionals, our principals, our counselors, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria, everyone, everyone just needs to rest their brain and take a break and be ready. So just want you to be aware, there'll be notices on the doors, we're letting vendors know about deliveries. We've been working on this plan for about a month with our principals too, that every building is going to be a little unique, Arlington is part of this too, I didn't, so they, they, I didn't, I did not forget them. Because we're all in this together, so I ask for everybody's understanding on that. You'll hear phone messages rather than actually get a call back, but there will be information on what to do in a real emergency, so. And I hope that'll better prepare us for the, as we go into the second semester. Another thing I wanted to talk to you about is transition. So I, I did, for those of you who are joining us electronically, I emailed this to you right before the meeting. It should be in your email, it's called Arlington Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Transition Plan. I hope you all received it, if not, it'll be there. So give everybody a minute to get it in front of you. It's a multi-page document, I don't expect you to, to read it all this evening. Our working document, yes.
I don't think that email made it to the Arlington board members.
Went to the SU, so if you're listed as an SU member, you should have got it.
I'm looking at my email right now, I don't have it.
I don't have it either.
I don't have it either.
So let me.
Me neither.
Yeah, me either.
Okay, so it's not, it's not just us.
Only 2021, email's a little difficult.
Who get it?
Let me go to my son. So it says I sent it at 5:08, but doesn't mean that it actually went anywhere. It could be caught in a some type of server. Now I have a spinning wheel going on here.
I did get one at 5:09 that, that the title was Bill Basic Letter.
Right, so they, and then you didn't get the other one the minute before, huh?
No.
Does, did the Arlington representatives get the, the letter?
No.
Negative.
No. I didn't get it either.
I just refreshed, Jim, and I did get it, but I didn't get the letter.
Okay. Well, the letter is, is simple, I can talk to you about that. And Bill has received and where, but under his one year contract with us, it says, I had to tell him, and I worked with Nick Galt on this, I had to inform Bill by December 1st whether I was going to recommend to the board that we extend his contract, and I sent him a letter saying that I am not going to make that recommendation to the board. As, as discussed, that, you know, the transition plan, so Bill is here. So he, he knows that he did receive that letter, and we discussed it before, so. No, for those who don't have it, it, it says, this notice is being provided under the terms and conditions of your individual employment agreement with the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union, specifically provisions two and 10.2, that I'll be, that I will be recommending to the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board that a successor agreement to your current contract not be issued for any period of time past June 30th, 2022. Ultimately, that is the board's decision, but his contract required me to tell you by, tell him by December 1st what I would be recommending. So that did transpire, which was all part of the transition discussions that Bill and I have been having, that resulted in the document that I shared with you, and working on sharing with everybody else, that has timelines for where we are on this. I could, Laura, tell me what I need to do to share my screen that would have this, if I can't get this email to go.
But I don't have it.
So I could email it to you. Right, because see, I'm logged in on the screen, not on my computer.
Yep.
So.
And Google Docs.
I can email, I also have an email, so let me email it to you.
Electronic communications are wonderful.
So, so I don't know if you understand this, though, I said, I can't easily share my screen because I'm logged in on that computer, not this computer to the Zoom meeting, but I forwarded it to Renee, so she, and I've made her co-host, so she should be able to put this document up on the screen, so you can all see it. And then I will make sure after this meeting that everybody actually gets it. I'll find out why. Yep.
With the highlights and red and everything.
Right, yeah.
I don't know who that is. Somebody trying to get in.
Yeah, I just let them in, that's the banner, banner.
All right, let's make a million things open here.
So I said, this is not a complete document, we also have an internal document that has some working notes on it that I've removed in the public document, because it's, a lot of it's not completed. But some of the highlights I want to show, there's the rationale for what, why this document was created. Won't read it to everyone and then, but what I do want to point out, and this was done, this draft is dated 11/1, but some of these dates have, we tag it dates we have not met yet, like starting December 1st, we're going to do two hour minimums. The S, but what's important, members, to look at, the SBSU administration will be covering the office, we will be in Arlington, actually starting tomorrow, not, it didn't happen Monday, I'll be up there tomorrow for two hours. Renee is coming with me, and we'll be there. And then this is a draft of what it'll look like going forward. Once we go past the first of the year, our intent is that there will be an SBSU administrator in Arlington for the full day, following that, that, a similar schedule. And the office next to where Bill is now is where we will be. And employees of Arlington schools will be able to make appointments with us. HR will be there, finance there a day, superintendent there a day, but it'll put a physical presence in Arlington going forward, so. This is, this actually got done a little bit earlier, the, the two principal, today we had our all principal meeting, and principals from Fisher Elementary and Arlington Memorial High School joined our principal meeting, made introductions with all our principals, so they will always be invited to our, our meetings now, but that first one took place today, which was a little bit ahead of schedule. You can, some of these notes are, you know, you, I don't expect you to, to, to absorb this all as I hand it out to you tonight. I want you to review it, but you'll see in our red notes that, those are going to hand it out as all black and white. Where we're assigning responsibilities. I will point out that starting in January, my office will start doing Arlington agendas. Your websites are just about converted. Katie West, Public Information Coordinator, completed them this week, and she's going to Arlington tomorrow to review them with the principals to make sure that the content is correct and accurate. So it's in the same format that the SBSU website, school websites are in, but in Arlington colors and graphics are all from Arlington, pictures from Arlington. So, so that all the websites will look similar for all the schools, and all be then listed under the SU. So you can see what, what, but it probably won't be up until, because we have like two weeks till the holidays, probably, again, they're probably more like after the first of the year that you'll notice the change on the website. Maybe sooner if Katie completes that, she's done a lot of work on it.
Jim, who has, who has access to, in terms of announcements, athletic schedules, et cetera, et cetera?
Who has access to it? So it'll be, we'll put it on our school count, on that calendar for that school website is the intent of that, yeah.
So what I'm saying, like if our athletic director wants to post athletic schedules or a link to athletics.
She just contacts Katie West, and that's how, yeah.
Everything goes to Katie.
Yep. And Katie's very responsive and will, but I will, I will do a reminder of that, because I'm not sure if athletics was listed. I know, if you see it the last, you'll.
Her athletes are pretty easy, it's just a link. But I'm more concerned about announcements and stuff that Missy might make or something like that.
She, I know she works with the AMU athletic director to do that, so I'm sure that it'll, it will go, it will go the same. So, you know, we anticipate that Bill, sorry, Bill, that I'm talking about you like you're not here, but I know you're in the meeting, that Bill will be here till June 30th, you'll see dates in here, but as certain transitions begin, one thing that you'll notice that we're saying, starting we're saying, starting January 1st, Assistant Superintendent Laura Boudreaux and I will start rotating who goes to an Arlington board meeting. Because it's the same night as MAU. So one of us will go to MAU and one of us will go to Arlington. But we're actually going to advance that. My plan right now is to come to Arlington for your December meeting. Having my calendar, Laura will cover, will cover MAU because I want to observe how your meetings are, how they run different from ours. So it will still be Bill's meeting with you, but I will be there more as an observer. So that's my December goal, which is a little bit ahead of where we are. You can see different topics that have different names assigned to for who's responsible for it. What we're, Renee and I are going to Arlington tomorrow and meet with Bill is budget building. That's the topic for tomorrow. Vic Maloney has already been out to Arlington for school safety planning, trying to make sure that the safety plans all look the same for all schools for, which is particularly important for law enforcement, for everything is flows the same. So snow day call, I did work that out with the principals of Arlington. When I went out there a few weeks ago and met with them. So there's an important difference to note that I will consult with them in the morning. But because they, as you mentioned earlier, they have their own buses, we're going to, there may be days that we, that Arlington is in school and the SU isn't and vice versa. So because they're not tied to do for transportation, we have that option. So we have a plan in place where we, I will consult with both principals and your direct, Arlington's director of facilities in the morning to make that determination. Tech department is, is working on email transfers, but that's not, not happened yet, other than, you know, when we, when we switch to the Google, to Google cloud here in the SU is most likely when, because Arlington's already on it. That's when we will all have similar emails. Which is going to at some point necessitate, because staff at, at Arlington, it will be their name and at SBSU, not BBSU. So and I know that's, I'm sensitive to that. That's like, you know, you, you're, everybody knows how to find me this way, you know, and that changed. So we'll, we'll, it's not in a rush to happen that we're, our, our tech department is gradually shifting us over. So it's not, it's not going to happen immediately, but it, for some segments, it will start earlier than others.
There's a way to, to bridge that.
They could back it that way too.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I mean, any knowledgeable tech department should be able to keep the existing email addresses as second aliases. If they're not knowledgeable, that I'd be happy to have.
No, that, that's how we do board member emails, which was, I believe, part of the problem with with one of our board members getting, so we have many board members who their, their personal email is behind, but because of the requirement that our, our emails are all archived and recoverable, we, we only use our official email, but where it goes behind that is flexible. Keep going, yeah. Transportation, but it's, and if you, why don't we just go to the end where it's all in red right there, if you don't mind. So these are, these are really things that we had a brainstorming session trying to figure like what haven't we addressed yet? We know that, you know, we still halfway through, there's a lot of things that we still need to identify. We have an other planning meeting. First week in January. I forget when, yeah. So we did an all-day retreat with administrators back on this date in November. And that's where we created this draft. Well, Bill had given us a draft of, he did the first draft of all, because I had asked him to give me, what are your responsibilities? What are you doing? What do you see? And we took it, did an all-day workshop identifying where this would, where this would go. We have a follow-up. I want to see, it's January 7th, but early, it's, I know it's early in January. It will be back at this and finalize it. But like any document like this, it's a living document. It's meant as guidance. It's not anything that is carved in stone and will continue to to flex it as, as we go forward. But I wanted you to see that, I wanted you to be assured that we are, put a lot of work into this and will continue to make this transition work. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
I have a question. Yes. Not on, not on what you just said, but before, when you talk about closing the building from December 22nd to January 3rd, does that mean that there, there'll be no sports programs at that time?
No, there will be sports. Yeah, there will be sports. Yeah. Because that, that is an other outlet that we certainly do not want to shut down. So that, and that's why I mean, like there are certain staff, there may have to be some, you know, custodial maintenance that will need to be in the building, but we're going to try and flex something different for them. You know, we want to be very supportive for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that concludes my report for now. I know I gave you a lot to, to look at and read. So I apologize to those board members who didn't get that yet, but I'll, I will get it to you. Promise.
Maybe Ray can, Renee, because we have been receiving emails from them. Maybe you can email it to them.
I'm going to go back and email it to individuals and not do the listserv. So.
Okay. You're all set then?
Yes.
Yeah, communication was one of the things I was gonna question. It sounds like we got some issues all over the board up there. So I don't know how you resolve that other than how you explained it before, that everybody because of archiving as an SU email and many of them like myself, I don't use that. I hardly ever look at it. Which is something I guess I have to learn how to do, but if we could resolve that issue, that's a big deal. I know the transition plan to Arlington, to include Arlington and Sandgate is always going to have some kind of bumps on the road. Thank you, Jim, for putting it on the table where we are now. And we have to understand it's going to be a flexible program. I guess I just want to make sure that we keep an eye on providing equitable and excellent services to Arlington and Sandgate. And that we include, that we mix and match our, our best practices, I guess, for the benefit of all of the districts. And whether that's finance or transportation or academics or physical plan issues. It's easy for us to think about our supervisory union as it's always been. Six districts and here we are solving all our problems, but Arlington has had very successful academic and, and athletic programs for years. And they may be able to add something to our slate. And I think we need to be aware of that as we move forward, COVID or not. So I think if we could get regular feedback about how that's going, that kind of helps keep us honest about being the board.
You should have it. I just sent it to Nicole. I don't know if you got it. I just sent it to you directly email and to Todd, but Matthew, I don't have an email coming up for you. So maybe Nicole or Todd can forward it to if they do, if it does go through. Otherwise I will spend more time tomorrow making.
I did receive it.
Okay. Yeah. Mine's just last name, first initial. It's the same as Nicole and Todd at bbsu.org.
I also wanted to say, we get a, an annual report, I think in June of academic progress and programs in place. Is that?
After the state releases, after the state releases assessment data and there was a pause because of COVID. So it's, yeah, that'll happen after the new year sometime. Yes.
But the, the timing isn't really my concern. It just, I've been approached about some, you know, are we providing adequate education in some areas that affects how our area, our reputation in the area, I guess. Are we, are we providing the academic quality that we need to for as kids go into college, CCB, for example? I've heard from some folks there. And this is not a, a gotcha situation. It's something that I think the board needs to take responsibility to take a look at and dig in and support staff as we need to and take a look in programs. I just think it's something that needs to be on the table for discussion as often as we can.
But as, if there are individuals that have approached you with concerns, I'd be happy to meet with them and the administrative team, curriculum directors, you know, principals, I would be happy to meet and hear their concerns too.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't an attack.
No, I don't, I don't see it that way. I welcome the opportunity to, to have that discussion, whoever has that, that concern and you know, some principals should hear and the director of construction, assessment, our assistant superintendent, myself, all parties that, you know, if we don't, if we don't get feedback, we can't improve.
I'll get you whatever information I have. That's all I have. Are there other issues to be brought before the board tonight? Seeing none, included in your packet should be FYIs for the budget status report for November student enrollment. And 5030 is an attendance policy on which the administrative regulations were updated. And that's the change to that. So if there are no other issues.
I'll move with your request.
Brandon moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
All right. Second from Jackie. All those in favor?
Thank you, everyone.
Aye.